Okay, well, good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Town of Kennybunk Select Board Meeting. I apologize for the delay, some technical challenges, and obviously, we are holding this over Zoom because of the winter storm in progress. So, without further ado, I am going to call a meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And moving into the first item is consideration and approval of minutes, and we have our draft minutes from February twenty-eighth, and so I would take a motion to approve those minutes.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second it.
All right, moved and seconded, let's see, I'm gonna go down the list, Courtney.
Yes.
To yes, okay, Sally.
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
And Miriam?
Yes.
And I don't see Bill here, so I, let me know if I missed anybody else, so, and that they asked for me, so that's six zero one. All right, my whole flow is thrown off here by having to jump between tabs, this is not how I normally do this. Okay, next up is item three, number three items to be signed, obviously, you don't have anything right now, but if there are any items to be signed, we can do that at the next convenient, earliest convenience, we're back in the office. And, okay, and then next up is public hearings, so item four is public hearings, the municipal officers of the town of Kennybunk will hold a public hearing to act on the following. Establishment of a fee schedule for beach parking permits for the ensuing year. So the current fees are listed in the agenda, and the resident taxpayers are five dollars each for a limit of three. Resident taxpayer guest permits are twenty-five dollars each with a limit of four. Non-residents, one day permit, twenty-five dollars each, non-residents, one week permit, one hundred dollars each, and non-residents, one full season permit, two hundred dollars each, with a replacement fee of ten dollars. Fines for a first offense are fifty dollars, and I don't see them scheduled out for second and third, so I believe at this point they're the same, but I'm open to discussion on that or correction on that. And as of now, Heather, do you want to jump in and provide staff perspective on?
So I'm having issues with my video too, so hopefully you can hear me.
Yep.
Okay, great, nope, these are the same as two thousand and twenty-two, we're just asking for your approval to have the same fees in twenty-three as you did in twenty-two with no increases.
All right, then I will open it up to discussion among the board, if there's any comments or questions. Courtney.
I just want to bring it to the board's attention that I was approached by a couple of Arundel residents, asking again for the same old conversation of looking for a discounted rate for Arundel residents. My response was very much the fact that, you know, not only are there not enough parking spots for even Kennybunk residents, which is always a concern of our own residents. But number two would be that we are the ones who pay to manage anything that happens at the beach as taxpayers, and then my number three point to them was that with the rising costs of budgets and this being a very strong hold on our revenue for us, I don't see why we would consider discounting the rates. But I really just put it out there that as a lifelong resident, I nine times out of ten end up on the back roads myself, and that in the summer months when the permits are required anyways. I think we could pull our friends and very few people unless they're there first thing after the dogs leave are getting, you know, right on the beach as locals. And so adding another mix into that, I just don't support, but I did want to at least bring it to the board and let you know that it was discussed and that it was mentioned to me. There was one point about that actually I did support, which was if an Arundel resident is a business owner in town, that I would support a small business owner being able to acquire a Kennybunk permit because they are a Kennybunk taxpayer, that I would support, and I made that point clear to them, but as I say, just wanted to let you all know about that.
Okay, thanks Courtney before you're saying, I had just a couple thoughts, but anyone else have any questions or comments about this? The only thing I was gonna add to that Courtney was, you know, I think you summed that up quite well, the only other approach I think that would make sense in terms of if you're looking for discounted rates for another town, then looking at sharing costs for upkeep from another town, I mean, it's challenging to do that, but you know, we do or have done in some of that in the, for the library, for example, where at one time at least, Arundel was providing funding for the library and as a result would get in-town, you know, library cards essentially for the Kennybunk library. And so if there was something along the lines of some, if the residents of the town of Arundel were interested in sharing costs of maintenance and lifeguard and all the things that are necessary to maintain that, the beach, then potentially, and we are always looking for opportunities to look for economy of scale and cost share, and that might be an opportunity, but I think that would be a much bigger conversation about how that would actually work, but that would be the way I think what would be necessary for that to happen. Okay, so Miriam, yep.
I agree, Shiloh, but I also just wanted to support Courtney's suggestion that business owners should, seems fair that they should be able to get purchased beach passes if they're paying Kennybunk taxes.
Can we get an answer on whether that actually happens right now, Joel?
Well, right now, the, I believe the ordinance is written so that it is for taxpayers. So if a taxpayer comes in, shows them, you know, proves that they are a taxpayer, then yes, they can buy a resident pass.
That's what I understand, I remember having this conversation before.
So last time I had to show my registration of my vehicle at the, to get my beach permit, even though they know me, I had to literally go down to my car to get my car registration in order to get my permit. So I don't know how that would be transferable to taxpayer unless Merton knows something.
Go ahead, Merton.
If a business owner pays taxes, and they probably do because they pay a taxed, you know, for having equipment or whatever, but business owners can get, have the same rights to the three beach passes if they're also taxpayers.
Because a taxpayer can also be, would also be an excise taxpayer as well, so that's easily proved with auto registration.
Okay, great, so then Bill Ward, you're here, and I just saw your hand up.
Yeah, just a real quick question, don't I recall that last year we limited the amount of, the amount of permits that any one taxpayer could buy?
Yeah, I would just went over that, so the resident taxpayers, five dollars each, limit of three, so they're five dollars each, but you can only get three, and then for guest permits, you can get four guest permits.
So if you're a small hotel, what limit, what limit do you have on that, by the number of rooms?
It's like resident taxpayer is limited of three and four guest permits is how we currently have it set up.
That's correct.
I don't see any hands up in the attendees, but if anyone wants to comment on this, raise your hand in the public. Okay, then I would, unless there's anything else, I would take a motion to keep the beach park green permits fees the same.
Ah, there we are, I will make a motion to keep the beach parking permits fees the same for two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded, I will start with Courtney.
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
And Leslie?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Miriam?
Yes.
And Bill?
I.
And I am an I as well, so that's seven zero. All right. Item B, the municipal officers of the town of Kennybunk will hold a public hearing to act on the following amendment to the Select Board Remote Meeting and Participation Policy. The proposed amendment to section four is noted below, and that is that remote participation by individual Select Board members, except for a remote meeting being conducted consistent with section three of this policy, members of the Select Board are expected to be physically present for all public meetings, except when being physically present is not practicable for one or more members. Circumstances under which physical presence for one or more members is not practicable include illness or other physical condition, temporary absence from the town of Kennybunk that causes the member to face significant difficulties traveling to and attending the public meeting in person, or B, to provide a reasonable accommodation to a member with a disability, or C, to provide care for a family member, and then there's a link to the entire policy and amendment. And there's a motion, proposed motion, so this is, we've discussed this as a board, and then we put this up for public hearing, so if you have any additional comments that we haven't already discussed, and this would be the time, if not, we'll leave it open to the public. Okay, then I'll take a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the amendment to section four of the Select Board Meeting and Participation Policy as noted above.
Okay, moved and seconded, Courtney.
Yes.
And Sally?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Miriam?
Yes.
And Bill?
I.
And I am an I, that's seven zero, okay, close the public hearing. And moving on to item five, public comments, so if you have anything you wish to comment on that's not on the agenda, and you're in the public, please, this would be the time to do so, just please raise your hand on the screen and we'll take your comment. Okay, Armon Boudreaux, I see your hand up, and we'll get you on here in a second. You should be able to talk now.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Great, thank you, my name is Armon Boudreaux, I own the White Sales Inn at sixty-one Fletcher Street. I wanted to bring an issue to the Select Board's attention, and that is the increasing amount of commercial vehicles on Fletcher Street. Most notably tractor trailer trucks, and literally twenty-four seven. I bring it to your attention because I believe it's a public safety issue, it adds a public safety risk to other motorists on Fletcher Street, but also adds a risk to, to our schools, increasing our traffic in the morning unnecessarily, but throughout the day. But I've been noticing an unbelievable amount of tractor trailer trucks coming down here, and what they're doing is they're coming down past the inn, and they're turning around at the roundabout, and they're going back out northbound towards the turnpike. And they couldn't figure out what was going on, it took me a little while, and I just kept seeing these trucks come down, and I'm like, we don't have anything between here and the turnpike that would cause this amount of traffic that would need to come down and turn around at the roundabout. So by error, one day, I'm coming off the turnpike, southbound, I'm getting off at the southbound exit for Kennybunk, and as I come around the ramp, a tractor trailer truck is exiting the parking area at the plaza and pulls out onto the exit ramp in front of me. And I noticed that he's driving unusually slow, and what he didn't do was pull back into the plaza to exit and kept going straight, and you could tell that he appeared to be confused or lost, and he comes off of the turnpike, goes through the toll, comes up by Cummings Market, turns left on Fletcher, and I actually follow him and watch him make a U-turn at the roundabout, and I followed him again and watched him go back over the turnpike and reposition so that he could go southbound again. And this is all related to the extension of the commercial vehicle parking lot that was added to that toll plaza. And the way that they have the traffic flow structured is after the trucks have gone in there and parked, when they go to leave, they're required to pull back into the exit ramp, in the middle of the ramp behind the plaza, and then they're supposed to go immediately back off the ramp on the other side of the plaza, through the area where the commercial fuel tanks are, where the diesel is, and then to get back onto the ramp to go southbound. And what's happening is they're passing that re-entry back into the plaza, and they think that there's another exit as they get closer and closer to the toll booth up ahead, but they realize as they approach the toll booth, they can't get back onto the turnpike. So they actually have to get back out off the ramp and turn around somewhere, and what they're doing is they're coming down here and turning around at this roundabout. I think I counted ten or twelve trucks in one hour last week in the middle of the day that I watched make U-turn at the roundabout. What's bothersome is the amount of noise, because you can hear them gearing down as they approach the roundabout, but then you hear the clunk, and as the trailers go up and over the center of that roundabout, you can see there is tire prints there daily, especially through the snow, but in the summer, when we don't have snow, you see our rocks that are in the center strewn all over the place. Now lately, they can't make the swing when there's a lot of snow, and they're making that turn wider and wider, and they're driving up to the curb in front of fifty-nine Fletcher, and they've damaged the grass in front of that property. I think it's something that needs to be addressed, there's a signage issue at that toll plaza that's creating all of this traffic on Fletcher Street that's unnecessary.
Well, Armon, thank you for bringing it to our attention, that is something I, until this moment, I did not realize was happening, and I certainly appreciate the thoroughness of the detective work to figure out what was going on. This seems like something that we could potentially talk to DOT about, about improving signage and/or traffic flow there.
Yes, it's definitely a DOT and signage issue, it's not a law enforcement issue, I am retired law enforcement. And I will tell you, from a safety standpoint, I don't know who designed that exit scenario in the plaza, but you have tractor trailer trucks that are coming out of that parking area at an angle, and they're pulling into or pulling out onto the exit ramp, where you have vehicles that have just come off the turnpike going sixty-five, seventy miles an hour. They have not slowed down to twenty-five miles an hour, let's be honest, and when cars come around that curve without the proper sight distance, you have a tractor trailer truck pulling out in front of vehicles, that is a safety issue, I don't understand how we have an exit in the middle of an exit, essentially.
Yeah, it sounds like that's a poor setup, especially if it's not aligned that way, it's clearly getting, they're clearly misreading it and not well marked.
But I can't tell you how much the commercial traffic here has gone up, and it just seems to be hourly and non-stop. And again, all times of the day and night, I can lay in bed and I can hear the rumble coming down the road, and I know they're gonna turn around, and you hear the clunk of the trailer as it goes up over the center of the roundabout and goes back in the opposite direction, all because of the way that is constructed at the toll plaza, at the rest area.
Okay, well, thank you, Armon, I see a couple hands up from the board, but just hold on one second, please. I was just gonna go ahead and say, Heather, do you think this is something that you or could check in with staff appropriate staff about to connect with DOT and let them know this is going on and see what they, what they can, what remedy they might have?
Yes, we can do that, and I don't know if Brian wants to, I think he's on if he wants to weigh in, but certainly we can get in touch with DOT staff and have those conversations, yep, and then we can follow up as well. With you all.
Great, great, and then from, for Bill and Courtney, if you had something other than that to suggest, then go for it, otherwise I don't really want to create a
No, but the issue is, the issue is that I think that that rest area is owned by Main Turnpike Authority, if I'm not mistaken, and I believe that I believe that there's an off-ramp, you know, they don't need to do that, they just need to have a signage in there so they could wreck people. I mean, I know that rest, I've gotten confused in there, so it's, so I think it's so I easily see the issue, but I also think if you're gonna address the issue with somebody, I'm not sure that DOT is maybe the right answer, I think your go-to would be Main Turnpike Authority and maybe whoever it is that owns or is renting that stop, because that, what used to be the old Howard Johnsons is actually a franchise that is leased by Main Turnpike.
Okay, well, and then Courtney, was there something else?
Yeah, the only thing I was gonna add is if in the, whatever, whoever we contact, Armon can probably speak to this as well, but it's not just the loud noise all day and night, but the speed, the speed that they're going because they're like, oh, how do I get back, I have to get back on time, and they are bombing down Fletcher Street, this is the one thing, I was shaking my head like, yep, because this has been ongoing for a long time, so whoever we do contact, it's not just that there's that many more trucks for me, it's the speed they're going as well.
Well, it's a mistake, right, so it's not something they want to be doing anyway, I don't think everyone would be happier if we can stop this, so, okay. Thank you, Armon, for bringing that to our attention, and it sounds like we'll be able to at least get that conversation started.
Thank you.
Yep, all right. Anyone else from the public to talk tonight? Okay, then, thank you very much, and we will close public comments and move to acknowledgements and announcements. And item A is to accept the following donation, seventy-five dollars from James Pastorelli for Kennybunk Fire Rescue, and I will take a motion.
I will make a motion to accept the donation from Mr. Pastorelli and send a letter thanking him for his generous donation.
All right, moved and seconded, I will start with Courtney.
Yes.
And Sally?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes, thank you.
Lisa?
Yes.
Miriam?
Yes, and thank you.
Bill?
I.
And I'm an I as well, that's seven zero, thank you very much, and we're moving to item B, staff changes. Promotions, Beau Gleason was promoted from firefighter, paramedic captain to deputy chief of EMS training effective March sixth, filling the vacancy created by the Department of Deputy Chief John Brady, which we'll get to in a moment, and then Audra Blaney has been promoted from police officer, school resource officer to the rank of sergeant, filling the vacancy created by the retirement of Sergeant Anthony Cluckey, Audra will begin her new position on March twentieth. And congratulations to Deputy Chief Gleason and Sergeant Blaney on your new positions. With that comes resignations and retirements, and so first up is John Brady, EMS Division Chief, eight years with the town. John has remained with KFR part-time to assist the department during the hiring process and transition of the new deputy chief, and please join us in thanking John for his dedicated service to our community. I would like to say that I, yeah, exactly, thanks, Bill, I know, I know John a little bit, and he's been outstanding over all of the years that he's been here, and he's certainly gonna be some big shoes to fill, it sounds like the transition process is gonna be, gonna be smooth, and we're gonna have a good path forward, but it's definitely, we're gonna miss John stepping down. But congratulations on his retirement, so, okay, item C, Town of Kennybunk Employment Opportunities. We have a significant list of current job openings, so if you're interested in coming working for the town, there's a lot of opportunities. For more information for any of these opportunities, please visit Town's website at kennybunkmain.us/jobs. There are seasonal laborers, seasonal summer camp counselors, seasonal community service officers, seasonal ocean guards, part-time just-for-kids, club site leader, part-time charter commission board clerk, part-time CDL bus drivers, per diem firefighter EMT, MTA, and paramedics, full-time police officers, full-time maintenance worker, truck driver for parks and facilities, and full-time director of economic vitality, so that is quite a slate and a range of possibilities, so please, if you're interested, go ahead and check out the job postings. Item seven, time-sensitive business presentations, yes, sorry.
Sorry, it's Lisa, can I interrupt you? I just wanted to go back one to Audra's promotion, and I was just wondering if anybody who's on here, maybe not, because I don't see any officers, but if they knew if she was staying as the school resource officer for KES, because I knew that could be quite an adjustment for some kiddos.
Good question.
This is Heather, I'm not sure, so I can get back with you, let you know.
Okay, cool, yeah, I just wanted to bring that to someone's attention, because I know that will be definitely a shift. But congratulations to her, and everyone should apply for a job, there's lots of good jobs here. Great, thanks, Shiloh. Chief Cooper has a comment.
Oh, yeah, there we go. Go ahead, chief.
Yeah, for Sergeant Audra Presby, or Blaney, I should say, she'll be moving to sergeant in patrol, and so they will be backfilling her SRO position.
Okay. That is always a position that requires special persons, and hopefully that, do you know if that's internal, or if they're gonna be looking for hiring, is that on the list, when I just read off of police officers, full-time police officers for hire?
I believe their first choice is trying to find a good solid internal candidate, but if not, they'd look outside.
Got it, all right, thanks, chief, I know, thanks for jumping in there.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, good, okay, so, next up, then, time-sensitive business and staff presentations. Item A is a new trash and recycling curbside collection app, Casella is launching a new app that will allow residents to see their trash and recycling collection day. Receive notifications about delays or rescheduling, search for items that are recyclable and more. Kennybunk will be the first community in Maine to launch the application, we are currently conducting a soft launch, and we'll make an announcement when it is officially launched. And the app, Recycle Better with Casella, is available on the App Store, Google Play Store, and on our website at kennybunkmain.us/curbsideapp. And Public Services Director Brian LaBarriere and a representative from Casella are in attendance to answer any questions, so I will open it to the board for questions. I have a question, since it's immediately hand up, so the app, as I, you know, it seems fairly straightforward with what we just saw, but there'll be information on on what, can you give us a little more background on like what the app is gonna, new information the app is gonna give to people? Because I think most of us
Yeah, absolutely, so Casella was able to make it, obviously, with the weather, so we've been working with Casella, Talia Bent is our municipal liaison, if you will, and they've been working on developing this, and so basically what it's gonna be is, it'll have a lot of information on the program, just a dump of information, and a lot of it's already on our website. But what this will also do is it's gonna have the route schedule, the maps, so every new residents that come can find out what data trash is picked up. It'll also have a programming in there about the do's and don'ts of our program, so you could, for instance, you can go in there and say, plastic bag, and it'll tell you where you can or can't put that, so it's kind of a little guide for that.
Doing an app on your phone.
Oh, Merton, hold on a second, can you mute for a second while Brian's talking? Or maybe we can just get him muted. There we go, thanks, go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, he's good, so I guess there'll be a whole piece in there about the do's and don'ts of what you can do with our Paisy Throw Program, our trash collection specifically on the recycling. There's also gonna be a portal where you can send questions that Casella will be able to answer, and the big piece for me is, you can sign up and register with them, and what it will do is give updates to the people that registered, if the trash truck breaks down, if it's delayed, if the trash pickup is postponed because of a holiday or rescheduled, it'll alert everybody, and they can actually create zones of that, so if the trash pickup, say, for instance, stays Tuesday, they got through half the day, and then they were unable to finish because of the weather, they would have actually been able to take their zone and only go to the locations that were not picked up, and alert them that their trash won't be picked up, it'll be picked up tomorrow on Wednesday, or if it has to get kicked out to Friday, it'll kick it out to there, and then again, there's a spot there where you can ask, you know, a bunch of questions of them, and what it's really gonna do for me is free up Kim's time, I'm answering a lot of those day-to-day questions that come up of, you know, stuff being, you know, damaged out there or not picked up, a lot of it's gonna go through there, they'll give us reports, so if it's things we need to go out and repair, we'll take care of it, but a lot of the questions Kim answers really are Casella questions, and this will help alleviate some of those.
Oh, that's great, Brian, I know for me, the two things have been, you know, when my trash hasn't been picked up, like what's going on, and they've always been very responsive when I've called them and said, hey, what's going on here? And somebody, you know, responds right away, but the other thing that would have been great for me is knowing, seeing where my trash truck is on the street, so I don't have time to still scramble and get my containers down to the curb. But having the communication option is, is fantastic. I think that's
Yeah, so down the road, child, they, this currently will not have the map of where the truck physically is. But down the road, that is a piece that they would
No, that's cool. I was kidding, but that's great.
I use, I use an app similar to that for the school bus with my children.
Right, exactly. That's what I was thinking of. Courtney, did you have something?
I just had a question. Are residents able to request replacement bins on the app or does that still have to go through you guys?
Yep, so we will have to do the work. They will be able to send that to Casella and Casella would report it out to us if things were damaged, misplaced, all that stuff. So it'll just be kind of an easier avenue for them to submit stuff rather than calling down here.
Perfect. Great. Other questions? That sounds great. Alright, thanks, Brian. Looking forward to that. So item B, discuss twenty-twenty-three ambulance billing rates. Each year, the town considers the rates charged for ambulance services. After an analysis of the costs associated with emergency medical service response services and related provisions, the fire chief recommends there be a slight rate adjustment in some of the services provided. And the link to the proposed ambulance billing rates is in the agenda. I am going to turn it back over to chief for a moment to give us a rundown of this.
Thank you, Shiloh. I appreciate it. So our last rate increase occurred in March of twenty eighteen. So obviously, it's definitely time for some minor increases. But one thing just to keep in mind is that sixty percent of our transports are with Medicare and Main Care customers. So we have a participating agreement with them. So even though we'll do rate increases, we won't see any increase in the Medicare, Main Care customers. Any of the, the regular private insurance carriers, we will see those increases. So on there, I provided the current rates for twenty-twenty-two and the proposed rates for twenty-twenty-three. Most of them are pretty minor increases. On the second page, I have some comparables. And you'll notice York is on the high end. And then we find ourselves, you know, pretty much right, right in line with, with everybody else. Does, does anybody have any questions from what we have on the table thus far?
Go ahead, Lisa.
Thanks, Chief Cooper. I agree that we need to raise rates, so I'm all for it. But I just was wondering if you could explain, because I know a lot of your calls are lift assists. And so what does that entail? Is it literally just a lift assist or is there a base rate for your time as well?
Yeah, so it, it used to be that our ambulance would show up, provide a service. So our, our EMTs and medics would provide a medical assessment, determine whether or not there was an injury associated to the fall and do the lift. And there was no charge for that. There continues to be no charge for that for private residences. However, I believe it was a year or two years ago, there was instituted the, the lift assist at the medical facility charge. So that's the on-scene medical treatment facility lift assist. So that would just be for all of our nursing homes or residential board and cares, not private residents.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I think five years might be the longest we've gone without any rate increase on this. So I guess Kudos to your department for keeping those costs down during this time. Alright, are there other questions from the board or from the public? Okay, then I will take a motion to approve billing rates.
Make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three ambulance billing rates as proposed.
Alright, moved in second. Courtney?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Miriam?
Yes.
Bill?
Hi.
And I am an I. That is seven zero. Thank you again, chief.
Thank you guys very much. I appreciate your time as always.
Okay, I M C, discuss a road acceptance request for conservation drive in the Brooks Landing subdivision. Chinburg Development LLC has developed a subdivision that was reviewed and approved by the Kenny Bunk Planning Board on September nineteenth, twenty twenty, in accordance with the land use ordinance as well as the street design and construction ordinance. The developer has presented the requisite materials outlined in section eight point four point two of the street design and construction ordinance for the proposed road acceptance of conservation drive in the Brooks Landing subdivision. Subdivision is located off Brown Street. The work was inspected by the town engineer during construction and determined to comply with the standards set forth in the ordinance and the necessary paperwork has been submitted. Road acceptances must be approved by a town meeting vote. And there's additional information. So if I guess if Chris Ostertier is here, wants to say anything about it, and I could see Miriam, you have your hand up. So why don't you go ahead first, Miriam?
Okay. So this idea started percolating during the budget board joint meetings and we had a brief discussion one night about plowing and roads and sidewalks and such. And it just occurred to me that as our town continues to grow, there's more and more cost to us to provide services and and as, you know, as we all saw, the, the budget, the cost of these services is, is continued to increase and it's as a select board person, I feel a sense of responsibility to the people who are struggling to pay their taxes. So I just wanted to bring this up because although we always have these private roads, we are not obligated to. And I I just question how long we should keep doing this automatically. I think that if, if a new development is being built and as people buy homes there and they know that they're going to have to pay for someone private to plow their, their streets, it wouldn't be such a big deal. And it's just something that occurred to me as, as a way we might be able to contain costs. So I wanted to see if we could discuss that.
Sure, once. Yeah, go ahead, Bill Ward.
Okay, if, if you wanted to do that, one of the things that I would recommend, not try and change course of midstream with projects that have already been completed. But to say, but to set a date at some point in the future where any new developments would, would, would come in and know in advance that we may or may that the public may or you choose not to accept their road. There's obviously no guarantee that the public will vote for it. But, you know, a lot of times during the planning process, the width of the road and a lot of things are done by the developers to make the road able for us to take over. So, you know, if you, if you choose to do that, you don't put the developer through those costs and then turn around and say, sorry, we're not taking your road. You know, I think, I, I, I see everybody's point. And if that's the, if that's the mood the board is, then I would definitely say in fairness to everybody, that, that, then let's, then let's look at what our ordinance status is and then say, then say, in the future, we will not be accepting, we will not be accepting new roads from small, from small, from small developments. And maybe we have to look at our statute too. Our ordinance is Chris is, Chris is on it, but Chris is on the call. He can address this too. But one of the things that we do when we think about sidewalks is we require that in a lot of these subdivisions that sidewalks are in some cases on both sides of the road. If I'm not mistaken, and I think, of course, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, so in looking at that, you know, we may, if we're going to have this conversation, let's look at, let's look at both things in terms of that, because once you tell somebody to build a sidewalk and once you tell somebody the dimensions and sizes of the road that they have to have, now suddenly you, you put yourself in an awkward position of, of trying to say no when it comes time to take over the road. But that's my thought.
Okay, I just wanted to say, I know we've got a lineup and I'm going to go through everybody. I just wanted to say one thing, just in case this is on your mind. We do have what Bill just discussed as an item for this year to discuss as, before we make any significant changes. Look at, take a look at the policy, take a look at the, what the ordinance currently says, and then come back with some suggestions to the full board as to whether the policy could change, whether it did change, what it would look like and how the ordinance might change. But as of now, are, we do have an ordinance in place and these votes have to go to the public to get approved or not approved. So go ahead, Lisa, you're up next, but I just wanted to set that context as what we're, we're already thinking as a, as a board.
Um, so Chris is the professional, so I'm going to let him speak to it. But, and thank you, Shiloh. It's good to know that it's going to be reviewed. I think though that we need to keep in mind, and this is going to what Bill said as well, that this developer has already been essentially approved. And so it wouldn't, I don't know, it wouldn't be the best thing for us to be like, no, we shouldn't approve it because they've already gone through all the process and the requirements. We need to start at the ordinance level. And I think also the select board needs to be involved more in these roads and developments that are coming through. So we can then say, you know, if we want this to happen or not. But this one, this developer has, you know, already gone through all the hoops and done everything that they're supposed to do. And so planning and everybody's brought this forward with their approval. And so we have to trust their judgment. But I just wanted to say all of that, but I, it's good to know that we're looking at maybe a different process because I do think it would be good for the board to know what is coming down the pike as far as developments. And so we can be more involved in what they're approved for or not.
Thanks, Lisa and Courtney.
Two things. Sally just messaged me. She lost power and so her internet is out. She just wanted me to let you know. She is safe, but that has happened. And then my take on this as well is the only thing I would say that's kind of tough for us is like everyone has just said, our hands are kind of tied whether we want to approve this or we not, or don't want to. We, it's already in the middle of the process before half of us were even sitting here. So we can't just do that. But what I would ask if everyone is in support of it is that whether it is the planning board gets a memo from Chris or from Heather or Chris himself when developers are coming forward to community development. I just think that it should be mentioned to them starting now or a year ago that the board is looking at this. And so this is what it is today, but I don't want to have to in a year from now when the next three months hit and developers come in and start buying land and start wanting to build. Oh, well, we started talking with them at the beginning of twenty twenty-three and now it's twenty twenty-four. So, you know, that's not fair. I, I want it to kind of be like in the precedent now to people. This is the ordinance as it is today. However, the board is currently bringing this to discussion so that they're aware that, hey, what it is today might not be when you go to get your road approved. You might want to consider some HOA fees in this subdivision or whatever it might be. Because it puts us in a really tough spot as a board to kind of have to push back on developers and land, you know, homeowners and really on Chris because his work of getting a, you know, a project to come into town and working them through that process, it kind of makes him look bad and we don't want that, but we also don't want to have to have our hands tied either. So that's something that I would suggest if we can, Heather or Chris or whoever.
Thanks, Courtney. I think there's a couple of things that's important to get the language right here. We are not approving this road. We are simply voting, at least tonight, to send it to a public hearing. And then on to the public to vote on whether or not the road would be accepted. So what we've done as a board is create an ordinance that says if you hear the requirements that are necessary for a road to be even proposed, to be even voted on it to be accepted. And then that acceptance goes to the town, to the town vote and everyone in the town votes on it. So that's the process. Our role in here is having someone from, having some from staff and Chris's department looking at the, make sure they passed, done what's set out in the ordinance and then passing it up to, holding public hearings and passing it to a vote. What we would look at to change potentially is whether or not that process continues at all, at all. Whether the requirements change or whether there's some additional review layer before it gets passed to the public vote. So there's a lot of possibilities in here that we have to go ahead and look at as a, as a whole. We'll take two more and then I want to make sure Chris has a chance to talk because I'm sure he's been sitting there going, could easily answer all of our questions and we're not letting him do it. So Miriam, you haven't had a chance to talk yet, so go right ahead.
Oh, I did, but I started it, but I just want to say I agree with, with your thinking that, you know, it would, it's not fair to the developer who's in the process right now, but I, I really like the idea of Courtney's of asking Chris to from now on, giving developers a heads up that this is something that we will be discussing just so that they know and they can decide whether they want to consider alternatives or et cetera. But, but I, I'd love to see this decided on a long-term as, as soon as possible. So I think it makes sense to warn, warn the bill, the, the developers as soon as possible.
We'd have to have something to warn them of, but yes, I should take your point. Lisa, go ahead.
I just wanted to quickly say while I recognize that we are not literally approving this road, I think that the public pays attention to our vote. And so I think that that is important for us to keep in mind that they look, if they're not completely knowledgeable about the situation, they look to see how we vote for it. If it's to send it to public hearing or to put it on the ballot, et cetera. So that's just something to be cognizant of.
That's a fair point.
Yeah, Shiloh, that's what's going to be my, my second question to you is like, I feel like we, why even vote on this? We have to vote. Yeah, like you can't vote no to not send it. What, what happens then? They've done all the requirements, so.
You, you could do that. We haven't, the, the, where we would stop it is not send it to a public hearing and not carry this forward. So in some sense that, yes, there's a way to short circuit it. I don't know that we've ever done that. And I think that could have been made about how get some significant pushback and rightly so from, from the
Of course.
Departments that
I guess the point I was making is that if the warning does begin, which I hear your point about, we need to have something to warn them about. Well, we need to warn them about that right now the board is already apprehensive about putting these roads toward, forward to the public vote. So this board is clearly apprehensive about continuing this just yes, yes, yes. And with moving forward, if a new project were to come next spring, I would be a no because of the fact that we are trying to cut down. So unless it was the right project that was, you know, made sense for where we are at as a town, then when do we start the process? And so I guess that's what I'm referencing. We might not have anything today. But the warning that this whole thing is not a promise is, has to be started now. Whether we have anything to show them or not.
I think it's reasonable to say that we're reviewing the ordinance and, and, but I don't think the board has made any statements of policy about accepting or not accepting other than that we're going to look at it and there are some that are concerned about it. So I mean, I, I'm fully with you that we, we, we should look at it. I think that should be sooner than later. But it's going to be any, any final decision on that ordinance is going to have to be what the will of the board is. And right now, there isn't consensus. Because we haven't gone through that process yet. That's all. I don't think we have anything to say other than we're, we're looking at it.
And I thought maybe if you talk long enough, you get all the ready answers. And actually
All the answers, not all the right ones.
Well, I was, I was very careful how I said that. A couple of things are important to know. One thing we do is we do alert everybody very early in the process that there's no guarantee. One, that the board will move this along or that the borders will accept it. So while you may feel some sense of pressure, there is not. That doesn't mean someone would be upset with you. Something that does happen is any project that comes through subdivision review by the subdivision regulations has to comply with the ordinance in terms of the street design and construction standards. The board does and can grant a waiver to it. In this particular instance, this is probably unfortunate, but opportune, I guess. This was built maybe the way it was supposed to. There is a minor waiver request they are making that it actually does not meet the design standards for a slight curvature. This road's located down by the railroad tracks off of Brown Street. And when you come in off the road, you make a slight curve because of the number of homes on the street, its classification requires a bit of a broader turning radius. It doesn't really functionally affect things. What I mean that is if you had lesser homes, it wouldn't mean you would need a lesser radius. It's just the way the standards are written. This is not a through road. There is no eligible expansion of it. So the idea of the waiver and the representation they made, it's not like they got more lots out of it because of it. It's just the lay of the land and as development continues, these things kind of happen. So to go back to one really important thing, we tell people very So to go back to one really important thing, we tell people very, very early on, you have to comply with the standards because they are really driven by safety and function, whether the town owns it or they maintain it. For the owners themselves, for emergency vehicles and access and all those types of things. So the fact that it's a twenty-two foot wide road with curves that can get emergency vehicles in and trash trucks. That's gonna happen whether we own it or not. There is another thing that we do have an option to do. It doesn't always show up in the operational costs, but. We could explore impact fees. Now, if we explore an impact fee, there has to be a defined impact for that fee to occur. So like, if we were to add three or four more streets and it causes to add a plow route, which was another truck. We can look to recoup part of that cost of the capital piece. All of these roads that are built. Essentially, the way they're built to meet our standards, we should not be having to invest in them from a capital perspective for at least ten or really fifteen years. Functionally, they should be fine. This road itself tonight is just under twelve hundred feet long, and they spent three hundred thousand dollars to build it. So it is a brand new road. It comes out of the box. Perfect for us. So that's all fine and good. I think that the board and I recall you making this statement, Miriam and everything else, it is realistic. It would be relatively simple for the town to say, they do not wish to take on any new roads. There are roads that have been built in town. To meet the town standards that are private roads, and some people just want it that way. And we can, if the board were to pursue that ordinance change, we can make that very clear upfront, that would not change the need for them to build it this way, just because they have to maintain it, you know. Any fire rescue has to get there, so. I do, and I think maybe I made this statement once, and it was just out of the fact that. For someone to feel like the rug was pulled out underneath them. This would be the one time I'd say, I don't feel that's the case, because we, we knew very young, we said, you were going to have to request a waiver for this. I don't oppose the waiver. Functionally, it's fine, but in terms of the process, anything that's going through the subdivision process. We can go through it very well to make the ordinance change, and if that is what the board desires. And where the equity is and all those types of things, it's pretty easy to do that analysis and say what it means. It would not require us to eliminate the ordinance, just change the aspect that it may be no longer eligible for pursuant acceptance of a road. And you are correct. All you're doing is, if you choose to, and you don't, I'm not aware of the board ever not doing this. You could simply say you don't wish to move that along. That is completely your choice. It would be surprising and interesting, and you might get some feedback from it. But with respect to the way it goes, this is just another step in the process. Everything that has been done in terms of constructability and. Along those lines has met all the standards. So we would have no issues if we were to accept this in terms of us. Expecting all the utilities that went in the road. There's public water, there's public sewer, there's public drainage. It does have a sidewalk that goes in there that does connect to a public sidewalk. Whether the neighborhood expects that sidewalk to be maintained like all the others, that's just another conversation, but it does connect to part of that growth area, so. But I hear, hear what the board's saying, and that's certainly something we can react to. If there's a desire to amend the ordinance. That won't affect the way development occurs in town. So there's no, no, no negative to that piece of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Really helpful. So to that point that we were all just discussing. I guess my, my take on. Where I would hope we'd, we'd carry a conversation would be some, some discussion of whether a. Some evaluation, some additional layer that looks not just as, at the standards being. Road standards and the development standards being correct, which, you know, we have currently. But some additional layer of the review along the way from the select board or from a, you know, subcommittee of the select board or. Review with town staff about where, how, whether each of these road, new roads. Is, would be a public good or public value to be accepted and maintained as part of the town infrastructure versus a private road. And that's what we looked at as a case by case is going forward. Anyway, that's, I think, a discussion of how we would do that, what kind of review would be needed. And, or whether we're just talking and saying, we're not accepting anymore, or whether we're just gonna go ahead and business as usual and keep doing what we've been doing. And I think those are sort of the three. Conceptual ways to, to think about it. I know the port went ahead and stops accepting new roads, so there's an option there that's been done. I think it would be worth a thorough conversation of the implications of that, and what that means for the people that live here and are currently having their roads to, you know, private, what could have been private roads taken care of versus new. New people moving in or new, new development occurring. What does that mean? What are the implications and how does that change things? So I think we really need to think through all of that before we decide, this is too expensive, we're not doing it. Is it a net positive in the end or not? So anyway, with all of that, I think we, we are clearly gonna have additional conversation about this. I think. I'm looking now, I don't have a, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to look up the attendees to make sure nobody has their hand up. Is there anyone in the public that wants to join the conversation at the moment? Okay, then I guess, I think for now, let's, let's see the will of the board for this particular motion and. Recognize that I think there's a pretty strong will to, to look at this more carefully at a, from a policy level, and then figure out what that means operationally. And you'll notice my camera suddenly started working, so that's nice.
There you are. I will make a motion to send the road acceptance request for the conservation drive to a public hearing on March twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three. To receive public comment before advancing this item to the next special or annual town meeting to act on this request.
Moved in seconded, Courtney.
Yes.
Leslie.
Yes, and thank you for that discussion. That was helpful.
Lisa.
Yes.
Hi, Miriam.
I think I'm gonna abstain because I'm very torn. Can I do that?
I, I suppose so.
Just in light of what I've heard tonight, I. I, I, I can't make up my mind.
Okay, Bill?
Hi.
I, and I am an I, so I guess that is six zero one. Not sure how we crazed the one there.
Sorry.
That's okay. It's always something, that's fine.
It would be five, right? Because Sally's not here.
Oh, Sally's not here. Thank you. Yes, I'm looking at the list. I know something was off. The boxes keep changing on my screen. Thank you, Leslie. So that's five zero one, five zero two. Okay. All right, item D. Joel, you're up next.
Just quick, I, I think that's five one one, maybe, since someone abstained and then someone's absent.
That's correct.
But a one is usually a negative, a no, if it's, if it's in that.
Right, okay, so it's just an abstain. Okay, yeah, we'll just, we'll note that. Sounds good.
Five zero one one.
There we go.
Five zero one one. There we go. Thank you.
I knew it was, I gotta be, this is just, this, always since, do this for a number of years, you'll find everything. All right, Joel's been doing it long enough. He knows how it works. Review budget article, budget warrant articles to be included on the June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three annual town meeting warrant. Finance Director Joel Downs has prepared the budget-related warrant articles, which are included in the draft document below. This is a preview prior to the budget public hearing scheduled for March twenty eighth. And then they, there are links to both. The draft warrant articles and the annual meeting, town meeting timeline. So Joel, take it away.
Sure, this is about a month ahead of schedule, as Merton pointed out to me this morning. Just wanted to get those out here, these out here, so that you can read them, see them. I don't know if all of you have actually taken a look. I'll just quickly go through them. The first article is the all comprehensive operating article. Rather lengthy, just, it's one long run-on sentence that just goes on and on and on, and no one. I don't think anybody really reads this except for me and Kathy Nollet. So the two of us. Poured through this remotely the other day, and, and we decided that, yes, it encompasses all the things that were voted on during the course of the, the budget. It incorporates all of the divisions, all of the departments, the TIF, all of the revenue items that were discussed. And it basically comes down to a bottom line. As to what the tax commitment will be for the municipality, for the town. And I believe that is fifteen million, four hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars, so. And then right at the top of the whole thing is the, is the total gross amount of twenty-three million, eight ninety-one, six twenty-three. So. There were many discussions about this. There were also discussions with regard, with, with regard to how the. Select Board and Budget Board recommendations are written. And as I mentioned before, I'll just read it. Select Board recommends acceptance of this article by a majority vote. And then Budget Board recommends acceptance of this article by a majority vote. In past years, when we broke this article down into various divisions, we would actually indicate all of the votes that were taken. However, since this is one large article, we have to condense and consolidate, and therefore that's the language that is used. Moving on, the next article is the one with respect to using ARPA funds for, for capital. There, I have some question as to whether or not this article is even needed. Because the voters in November allowed the, or gave the Select Board. Authorization to spend this money. So this question will go in, in front of our, our law firm, Jensen, Barry, Gardner and Henry. And they can decide whether or not this is a, a valid award article. My, my gut says that it, it's, it's a good article, even though it's, it's almost like belts and suspenders. It's already been voted on. But let's, let's ask the voters once again if they're okay with us spending. Items as listed. And most of those are public safety, except for the last item, which is the pickup, pickup truck for public services. That one, the actual recommendation by Select Board and Budget Board. Is indicated because we've, you voted on those items separately. Seven in favor, zero opposed for the Select Board, Budget Board, six in favor, one absent. Moving on. Next item is for the spending of unassigned general fund balance, fondly known as surplus. Sum of one million, eighty-two thousand. And again, all of the items are listed in, on there. And again, because that item was voted separately by the board, two boards. You can see the vote, seven in favor, zero opposed for the Select Board, Budget Board, six in favor, one absent. And then there is the large article, significant article for authorization for bond. Issuance. And so again, all of the items are listed, all the roads are listed. It's very. It's very detailed, three million, eight hundred and ten thousand. Last item on there, other, other public ways, sidewalks, parking lots in the town, if funds permit, so. If by some chance we understand and we seldom understand, if ever. There's extra money, then we can spend it on other roads as well. So.
Joel, could we just pause for a moment? We'll get a couple of questions.
Sure.
Lisa, you wanna, you had your hand up first.
Um, yeah, I don't, so I just wanted to say, I guess it's not really a question, but first of all, I did read it, so I'm a nerd like you and Kathy.
Good, good.
And my question, but you answered it, was regarding that question for the ARPA funds, because it had been approved, so. Thank you for answering that. And three, I thought it was all very well written, so thank you.
Well, it's, it's pretty, actually, it's pretty dull and boring. It's, it has, has to be one sentence, and it has to be. Somewhat understandable, and it has to come down to yes or no answers, so.
Yes, well, I thought. With everything that you're navigating, I thought it was, I could understand it, so.
Thank you.
I think there was a thing that if finance gets exciting, then you're doing it very badly, so that's good, then. Leslie, go ahead. You're muted.
Gosh, you'd think I'd know by now. Quick question, I guess, if that second article is deemed appropriate to keep in with the ARPA fund spending. And it was already, like, spending was already approved. And if this article is kept in, and people change their minds and say no, what is, what does that mean?
That, then that's a question for the attorneys. And that will be asked in this coming week.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I think that's it for now. Joel, go ahead.
Okay, so discussing the bond issuance article, three million, eight hundred and ten thousand. Everything's listed there. I still have some placeholders, some. Information provide in that, in that article. It's a fiscal note. It's not required by, by law, but I always add it for just general information. And then last but not least is the article with respect to the. Sidewalk in front of the Brickstore Museum, and you'll see that it's explained as Main Street sidewalk repair and replacement from Dane Street to Green slash Summer Streets. And again, it's, it's just a hundred and seventy-five thousand. I peel that out only because of an explanatory note down below. Revenue from Route One TIF, increment financing TIF district may be used to pay down the debt service. On the borrowing authorized for sidewalk repair and replacement as described above. So again, I, I peel it out, it, it's still, it is still a general obligation bond. And for some reason, if money wasn't available in the TIF, and we had to spend it out of the general fund dollars. We'd have authorization to do that as well. So it's a, it's. I break it out, but it doesn't need to be broken out. How's that for an answer?
Lisa.
I forgot. One other thing I wanted to say, Joel, you had said when you first started speaking about, we're doing this earlier than normal, and I appreciate that. I think that it's important for us to look at this and contemplate it. Instead of on the day that it's presented to us, and we have to decide right away if this is how we want to present our warrant or not. So I appreciate it being done a little in advance this year.
Sure. The next step is the public hearing on the budget, and that will be your next meeting on the twenty-eighth, and I'll do a, a quick PowerPoint on that. Go through probably ten slides, and then discussion by the, by the board and discussion by the public.
Great. Yeah, I, from my perspective, it was the same question about the, the ARPA funds, but we'll get the answer on that and decide one way or another to whether to put it forward, and that's, that's great, so. I certainly appreciate this, and it's looking, looking very solid, so. And, and thank you for being here and. Running, walking us through it.
My pleasure. By the way, there's no snow here, so.
There's no snow there. Oh, that's, that's, that's nice.
Isn't that surprising?
Remembering Joel.
I should have my, should have had my background, just be looking out the window. Okay, any other questions for Joel? Anything from the public? Okay. We, item eight, then, old business. We don't have any old business tonight. So we'll move to item nine, new business, and there are several items here. So item A is to consider expanding the Climate Action. Plan Task Force. So at our July twelfth, twenty twenty-two meeting. The Select Board created a Climate Action Plan Task Force with the goal of working together with three other municipalities and Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission. To share resources and experiences in developing community-specific climate action plans. The Select Board appointed nine members to this task force, which included representatives from the community and various town committees, staff, and the Select Board member. As work on Kenny Bunk's Climate Action Plan has gotten underway, the task force has identified the need for additional support and stakeholder involvement. The committee has requested the Select Board expand membership of the task force to include three additional members to assist with the remainder of this project. So do we have? Comments on this? Lisa, what do you have for us?
Um, yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions anyone might have, and Chris, I think, is still here and can answer some questions. But we identified, well, we had initial thoughts on what would be needed for the. Task force, as we've been meeting and speaking with SMPDC and other stakeholders and various groups. We've identified that we can use a few more key people. Partially because of participation and partially we're looking for some specific specialties, for lack of a better word. As far as some people who have some knowledge on policies and manuals, it's some pretty dense information. And so it'd be nice to see some more people involved. And because the Select Board had initially. Approved this task force and appointed the members, we are coming to you to hopefully, hopefully. Increase the size.
And so we would increase the number of members and then put out applications, put out a notice that there's some available spaces, and then applications go through that process. Okay?
Yep, so we'd be going through the same processes before. If you all, or we all approve this move, then we will have applications. And hopefully, look at them at. If you all or we all approve this move, then we will have applications and hopefully look at them at our next meeting.
Well, frankly, on an operation of this size and complexity, it would be a little bit surprising if you got the number exactly right at the first try.
Yeah.
Who they are, so certainly reasonable to think that there would be changes as we go and adjustments made, so. Yeah, I'm all for this. Other questions or thoughts? Okay, well, then let's take a motion.
Take a motion to expand the Climate Action Plan Task Force to a total of twelve members. That's listed applications for task force volunteers to be considered at an upcoming select board meeting.
Moved in seconded, Courtney.
Yes.
Leslie.
Yes.
Lisa.
Yes.
Miriam.
Yes.
And Bill.
Hi.
And I'm an I, so that is six zero one. All right, thank you, Lisa, and hopefully that will.
Yes, thank you, everyone.
Okay, item B, discuss a letter of support for an Army Corps of Engineers project to begin the environmental survey and dredging for the Kennybunk River in fiscal year twenty four. The Corps has indicated they will need approximately five point one million for FY twenty four to begin the process. Senator Collins is considering submitting a congressionally directed spending request for this five point one million for FY twenty four. No funding is currently required from the town. The Senator is requesting a letter of support and the town of Kennybunkport also received a similar request. Staff will coordinate with the Harbor Master and Kennybunk River Committee further on the support letter and may also provide a joint letter from the other from the two town managers. So Heather, do you have any additional comment on this?
Just wanted to add that Kennybunkport did give direction for the manager to work on a support letter on Thursday last week. We are working on a joint letter, talked with the Harbor Master, working with him to put some of that of the economic impact around the river and the benefits. So we conclude that in the letter, very supportive. And then I also talked with the Chair of the River Committee. And this is a priority for them and has been so he was very supportive as well to move forward on a letter of support for this dredging, for this request.
Bill.
Quick question on that, Heather. So well, my understanding, I thought I understood from there that we're supposed to each send our own separate letters of support. You're saying that that we can we can do a joint letter of support, that's they'll be okay with that?
Yes, yeah, that's what we were talking about with the the person from Senator Collins' office and that's yet. So we had we'd been drafting a joint letter, didn't seem to have any concern about that.
Perfect, okay.
Great. So do have we heard anything from what how much communication there'll be from the Army Corps on what will be actually be involved in the dredging? I believe I remember them doing this dredging the last time around and there was a barge in the canal and they just they worked on it, but there may have been, I don't know to what degree there may be disruption of boats going in and out of the harbor and what what time of year it will be and so forth and what they're gonna do with the with the dredge material, so. I hopefully I'm, I think it's fine to go ahead with letter of support and support that, but hopefully we can get some communication set up with the Corps to answer some of those questions.
Yeah, those are all great questions. And when I talked with the Harbor Master, he said previously there is a lot of coordination, obviously letting folks know that they typically don't during do this during the busy season, they know as well. And so he thought they would probably start in just in the like January timeframe prior to the summer season. And then the dredging material, obviously, depends on what they're picking up, where they would take it to, and certainly those are those are questions that we have as well. And I had reached out to a contact that Senator Collins' office had given me for the Corps. So we'll continue to have those questions and make sure there's there's follow up and we understand what a timeline looks like and make sure that's made, everyone's made aware.
Great. All right. Questions from the public? Great, then I'll take a motion.
Thanks, Heather. I'm gonna make a motion to authorize the town manager to sign a letter of support on the Board's behalf.
I'll second that.
Moved in seconded, Courtney.
Yes.
Leslie.
Yes.
And Lisa.
Yes.
Miriam.
Yes.
Bill.
Hi.
And I'm an I, so that would be six zero one.
Five.
Five, five zero one, I think I said six zero one last time, too. I'm gonna let you to go ahead and just break me on this every time, Leslie.
Channeling Sally.
Sally, I'm just gonna say Sally would be supportive. No, that's good. Six, yeah. No, six zero one is right. One is Sally.
Oh, sorry.
I was right the first time, yes.
My bad.
Wait a minute, like, where's the other one? There's a missing person. Okay, no, we got this. Okay, so item C, discuss a letter of support for the Maine Department of Transportation for the reconstruction of roadways in Lower Village. This request is in support of the Maine Department of Transportation's FY twenty four congressionally directed spending request to fund the reconstruction of roadways in Kennybunk's Lower Village. This project aims to make the small business and residential center more cohesive by improving both traffic flows and mobility for pedestrian and bicycle users. The estimated cost of this MDOT FY twenty four project is twelve point five million. The state local match is two point five million, shared equally by both, and our support is contingent upon town meeting approval. So let's have some discussion about this. Heather, do you want to start off or do you want to turn it over to Chris?
Yeah. So remember, this item was brought up during the budget discussion as well. The EDC had the Economic Development Committee had raised this issue as well. So I did talk with folks from Maine DOT and you know, there's a lot of work to be done here if this does move forward, but this gets our name initially on the list and then we'll see what happens with the funding and then we'll obviously fiscal year twenty four, so that gives us a little time to really understand what the project is. And then, because we'd have to do some certainly some significant design and engagement with the with the businesses as well. And then we have to bring it to a town meeting. So so some work to be done, certainly. And then once, I I guess, once, and then there's a three-year construction cycle, so we'd also really need to make sure, and Brian's brought this up previously, but working around sewer and water construction that might be going on for those lines in Lower Village as well. So a lot of coordination, but an opportunity here, so. And lots of letters of requests. And so we just wanted to bring this forward. We thought this was a good opportunity, recognizing there's there's more work to be done for sure. And also a potential match that we would ask, need to ask the voters for.
Right. Bill.
Well, I wondered how, as long as you're gonna do this. One of the the lower village, the lower village plan is out there. And some of that intersection where the road construction is going to be was 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 gonna be considered in that. And I think I think in the area of sidewalks and that sort of thing. I I was never for the idea that they would handle the road in too tight. I I was always concerned about that and I don't think DOT would do that anyway. But given the his, given the long history that that intersections had, but the but one of the things that would definitely be helpful would be if we could, if we could get the side, if we could work the sidewalks in, even if we're doing it with separate contractors to try to get the sidewalks done in that intersection at the same time. We've got the five hundred thousand dollars that the voters voted for, I believe. Where is he? Chris Ossarander should be in there to, or Joel could answer that. And so I was just wondering if there was a way to dovetail some of the improvements that they that that were asked for in that along with this project.
All right, that's, Chris, are you? My thinking is that if we really put together a plan or if there was a real plan, perhaps the five hundred thousand that could be discussed or that could be redirected may want to, you probably need to ask the voters about that because we 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 couch that in terms of it being a match with respect to an MPI. So again, redirection, but asking the voters and then if we needed to go for more money, if this really was for fiscal year twenty four, then perhaps a November discussion or a November question. So, Chris, your thoughts?
I agree with you, Joel. I think repurposing the money shifting from the MPI. The MPI was never going to be enough funding to do this project, so it makes sense to take that five hundred thousand authorization, redirect it. And I think Heather hit the nail on the head. There's gonna be so much additional public engagement that's gonna have to happen. We're a good two years out between everything else that goes through it. So it's gonna bring more of those issues that Bill's talking about into focus here. So I think the first step would be thinking about, okay, we're gonna move that five hundred thousand dollars to a separate funding source, because there was never gonna be enough to do what we really need to do for any project we tackle down there. So both both avenues are where we have to pursue this.
Great. I think, Miriam, you had your hand up first. I'm sorry, I don't didn't see who had it up.
Just a question for Heather. Looking down the road toward raising the other five hundred thousand dollars that we would be responsible for. Is that something that you can get grants or maybe reduce that amount by some kind of grants or that that sort of thing?
Well, you so it's local match for a ten million dollar grant, so they're they're gonna they're gonna want a local investment, so I'm typically you know, they they want local funds invested. So I'm I'm not sure, I'm not sure if there are other opportunities with state money, because this is federal money. So we just have to see, we could certainly work with Maine DOT and then you know, and then we we also need to understand ultimately, you know, what that that total cost is. These are all numbers that we need to flesh out and, you know, do that design and that final design. And so there there's still a lot of work to be done for sure and under clearly understanding those final numbers.
Thanks.
Heather, Courtney?
So and Heather, also just from an EDC perspective, and just to be clear, this letter kind of just gives us the opportunity to really be to have that conversation with with the state, is that correct? Like, yeah, so this doesn't mean anything and.
Yeah, so this puts then, so this project is then put on a list, then the feds will decide if they're gonna fund. So if they say yes, so that's what so it would be awarded, I think, maybe end of this year, early twenty four, and then we'd figure out schedule and timing and then get more into the detail, working with Maine DOT to understand what the project looks like in more detail.
Correct. And like in the EDC perspective, I encourage them to push this forward because what's the risk? If we end up getting into the conversation and it doesn't cover what we want and it's not worth our two and a half million match, then the voters are gonna say no anyways, or we don't vote to send it to vote. So either way, we have a lot of out. This is basically the only way it sounds like to have the conversation.
Yeah, I think so. I think we also want to be good partners with Maine DOT. So I think, you know, we also really wanna, we we do need to be thinking that this is you know, a real opportunity that we're gonna, we're gonna put our put our best foot forward here. Recognizing that there's a lot of, there's a lot of work still to be done if this moves forward.
Yeah, I I think.
But it is an opportunity, for sure.
Exactly. Yeah, and and you know, the work in Lower Village has been something that's been on the plate and something that's been identified as a need and and a priority for a very long time. And the biggest reason we haven't been able to move forward with it is there hasn't been twelve, ten, twelve, fifteen million dollars sitting around waiting to be used on that project. There's other examples of that, but this is this is a, you know, in town, but but you asking about grants, I think it is important to look at this and say this is, you know, an eleven point two five million dollar grant, ten of which coming from the federal, one point two five from state. And we are putting up, you know, one point two five million is not a small amount. But if the work requires, you know, twelve to get it done, and we're getting most of that from other sources that are not through Kennybunk taxpayer assessment, then, you know, it's 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 worth taking a very good faith, very thorough a comprehensive look at how we might make that happen. So. Okay, comments from the public? Okay, then we'll take a motion to authorize town manager to sign the letter.
All right, I will make a motion to authorize the town manager to sign a letter of support on the Board's behalf.
I'll second.
Moved in seconded, Courtney.
Yes.
Leslie.
Yes.
Lisa.
Yes.
Miriam.
Yes.
Bill.
Hi.
And I am an I, so that is six zero one.
Thank you.
And moving on to item D, discuss a request to waive the beach parking permit requirements for Special Surfers Night. And we received a request to waive the beach parking permits requirements to allow attendees and volunteers of Special Surfers Night to access parking at Gooch's Beach and Middle Beach. They also offer a shuttle to decrease traffic and parking needs. Special Surfers is a nonprofit organization sharing the empowering experience of surfing with children and young adults of all ages with special needs. And the requests have the permit requirements waived at the following three dates and times. Tuesday, June twentieth, from two PM to seven PM at Gooch's in Middle Beach. Tuesday, July eighteenth, from two PM to seven PM. And Tuesday, August sixteenth, from two PM to seven PM, all of those at Gooch's and Middle Beach. And there are no road closures required for this event. Questions, comments? One second. Lisa.
We've done this in the past and I think it's a great event and so I fully support it.
Thanks, Lisa. Leslie.
I am totally for this. I just hope I guess, since you have done it in the past, I I was just gonna say, I just hope participants and volunteers don't especially the July eighteenth and August sixteenth, I hope they know that it doesn't necessarily guarantee them a parking space. Yeah. At least it guarantees them not getting a ticket.
Correct. Yeah, thank you for that for that heads up, Leslie. I think that's hopefully they'll have their their people in place well in advance. I know I've been down there for I've never actually been able to participate in this, not being a competent surfer, but being able to be see see the the event taking place and talking to people involved in it. It's been really, really wonderful that that happens in our in our community. So absolutely for this. So. Other comments or questions or just take a motion?
Make a motion to waive the beach parking permit requirements for the Special Surfers Night for the dates and times.
Second.
Been seconded, Courtney.
Yes.
Leslie.
Yes.
Lisa.
Yes, I'm putting the dates in my calendar.
Miriam.
Yes.
Bill.
Hi.
And I am an I, so that would be six zero one. Miriam, did I get you?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, you're just jumping, everybody's jumping around on my screen again. Okay, six zero one. If I missed anybody, let me know. Okay, item E, discuss nominating an elected official and a public representative to represent Kennybunk on the York County Budget Committee. The York County Budget Committee Caucus will be held on Wednesday, April twelfth, at six thirty PM in the York County Courthouse, forty five Kennybunk Road, Alfred. Each district has three seats, two elected municipal officials and one public representative. District two, which includes Arundel, Bedeford, Kennybunk and Kennybunkport, has two vacancies to fill, one for an elected official, which expires on March thirtieth, twenty twenty five, and one for a public representative expiring on March thirtieth, twenty twenty six. So the statute requires that only one member can be elected from each town. At this time, district number two already has an elected member from Bedeford. Therefore, only members from Arundel, Kennybunk and Kennybunkport may fill the elected vacancy. So is anyone interested in serving in this capacity? There's a lot of chirping of crickets. Lisa.
Uh, yeah, I have a couple of questions. And these might be questions for Heather. Do we know if anybody from Arundel or Kennybunkport is interested or running?
You know, it's a good question. I don't know. But we we can certainly find out and follow up and let you know. So I don't know.
Okay, and what was my?
But it does say but just when it does say they're they've filled one of the positions by Bedeford, it seems to suggest that the other ones are still available, that they don't have, they haven't filled those by them, so.
Well, it sounds like you offer your selection, you still have to win the caucus.
Yep, you do, you do. That's exactly right. Yep.
I was just curious, you know, if it's like a cutthroat thing or what do we do if nobody runs?
Yeah. Then they probably just have vacancies that aren't filled.
I believe, right, and I believe in the past we have had someone I wasn't gonna name, but okay, I'm sure he'd be the first to tell us if he was here. But he, yes, so it's served on that before and in, I think, in fact, both been approved and not and not gotten in in different years, depending on the level of interest and number of people running, so. Tell you, you sound very interested, Lisa.
Well, I might reach out to a previous member of the Select Board who may have had this position and just see what it all entails. I did look into it a little bit. And while the term is two years, I believe the actual commitment is only like two or three meetings. So I am potentially interested, but.
So can we then, it looks like the next item is. So can we then, it looks like the next item is looking at a public representative position, and then we could put forward that nomination, it either the March 28th or April 11th. So could we put this to March 28th and between now and then, said you want to do some background?
See, yeah, I'd appreciate that. Yeah, definitely.
Postpone this vote until the 28th. That would be great. I appreciate you looking into it. Okay, so then I'm going to hold off and not do that motion tonight and unless somebody else wants to jump in. But the crickets were pretty loud over there.
I think it's important. I know that the county is still spending their ARPA funds, a big chunk of it has already been spent on a rehab facility. And I know construction's starting, and I do follow what goes on in York County. Being an employee of the York County Courthouse and being in that building. So I know what they're up to, and I think it's important. If there was somebody completely invested from Kennybunk Port or Rundle that has more experience, I would definitely see to them, but I do think it's important that we have some representation.
Absolutely. No, it's I appreciate that. Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, quick question. Lisa, did you say you're an employee of the county?
I'm not actually of the county. I'm an independent contractor.
Okay.
Yeah, but I do work at the courthouse.
So the next item is the public representative position. And so if the board were to nominate someone from the public to represent Kennybunk, it is a requirement the name be presented by at least one member of our select board at the April 12th caucus in Alfred. So if there's any public interest, we, we, the select board members may bring a nomination forward to either the March 28th or April 11th select board meetings. So if we become aware of someone who's interested in this, we can make a note that this is, this position is available. We're talking about it right now, but maybe there's other ways to to broadcast that this is an opportunity. And then we can nominate that person at one of our next two meetings. And so please note, if we have a select board member or member of the public willing to serve, each would still need to be elected at the caucus taking place on April 12th. Only elected municipal officials can vote to seat budget committee members. Fellow elected board members that wish to vote could also, would also need to attend the caucus. So that's, that's the process that we'd go through. So yeah, if there's anybody that's interested from the public for this, there is an opening as well. All right. And then item F is, unless there's any additional comment, to discuss any other business of the board tonight.
I just wanted to point out that Courtney had to go. She's no longer with us.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we're done with voting for tonight, so I hopefully won't have to scramble to figure out the new numbers. Except to write at the end, the last one. I'm gonna look lovely on it.
No.
All right, select or subcommittee reports. I don't think we had subcommittees meet since our, well, was the oh, no, the ordinance subcommittee. Last meeting ordinance met since our last, that was a, I was trying to remember whether that was before or after our last meeting, but it was right after. Okay, so ordinance, ordinance met, and I actually don't have that agenda pulled up to remind me of everything on that meeting, but it was a pretty comprehensive and good start to our renewed discussions of ordinances. Excuse me. So the order of things that we discussed, we talked about the status of the the parking ordinance and where things currently stand on that. And I believe the where we left that was the final, that's, that's coming back up in another month for the final review and where we are with on the parking ordinance. Is that right, Heather? Am I remembering this correctly?
We'll bring you back, we'll bring you, bring back to the ordinance review subcommittee, a draft in, I think the meeting's April, next meeting is going to be April 13th, I want to say. Just for those two items on, on parking and then food trucks ordinance as well, we talked about, and we said we would try to bring with probably some kind of version of an ordinance rewrite there as well in April. And then short-term rentals, we bring back to another meeting in May. So we had some more time to gather some information, and it wouldn't be a draft in May, would have some additional questions and start to formulate what a policy might look like. Or I'm sorry, like ordinance.
Right. And so the, the discussion around short-term rentals was an opening to the discussion essentially, which a reopening discussion Courtney has, you know, had a lot of background on this and done a lot of work over the last year plus. Karen came forward from the, from town staff and gave us, you know, a thorough rundown of what they've been looking at and what the essentially what they're, what they're seeing as the issues and potential paths forward. I thought it was a good, a good first discussion. It's a very complex issue, very challenging, challenging to understand what to do about it and what the right endpoint is or long-term thing is, as well as what is the right initial step to take. However, I think the discussion was fruitful. We're going to be bringing it back up at the next, at the next meeting and hopefully we'll have something to bring back to the full board that has a bit of meat to it that we can, we can actually make a difference in the relatively near future on, on moving forward on short-term rentals. And then sort of the same with a different topic, but kind of the same level of progress with food trucks. There's been a lot, a lot of discussion about what the challenges are with food trucks, what the, what the needs are for the community. What are the specific regulations? How does the ordinance need to change? What do we need to do with to make sure that our community is, is able to have that resource, but also you know, we have a thoughtful, a thoughtful way forward. So those food trucks can exist in our community without while still complying with needed safety and traffic rules and so forth. Courtney stepped out, but Miriam, did you want to say add anything to that?
No, I think you got it.
And then the only other one was that we actually, the record towing, which we thought was initially in order is actually a policy. So we'll be bringing that back to you all to look over for some suggested changes, and we're making those final changes, and I hope to bring that back soon to you, to the select board to review.
Perfect. And I think that was the only subcommittee meeting unless I missed something.
Yep.
Okay, then board liaison reports. So why don't go ahead and raise your hand if you have a board liaison report. Bill, go ahead.
Okay, so planning board met last night and they did more work on LD 2003. One of the areas that they govern, let Chris try to get into this, there was the some issues related to empty lots and which would evolve with the houses being torn down. And, and the other, the other question, the other issue had to do in fact with short-term rentals as it applies to ADUs. And the, the ADU discussion kind of dealt more, we've been our, the, what I've seen from what our board has looked at is we're trying to deal with it more from an ordinance perspective. They're trying to, they're trying to look at it more from a land use and time use perspective. And so that, that came up last night. They actually had asked to develop the definition for short-term rentals being 15 days. Kennybunk Port is 14, statewide is 30. Everybody seems to have a little different take. I think Portland stays with the state 30 days in terms of what defines a short-term rental. And that's, that's what I recall to that. Chris, did I miss anything? I capture it all? Oh, good man. Thanks.
One thing to be aware, we did discuss that just since you brought it up and made that made the connection, that there is a distinction that we, you know, had this discussion at this, at the ordinance subcommittee distinction between ADUs and short-term rentals. They're not the same thing. It's not that an ADU couldn't potentially be used as a short-term rental, but those are, those are specifically created under the state law as a different entity than a quote, short-term rental. So those are different policies. They're, they're connected kind of, but they're different policy and different.
It's gonna be a very interesting discussion when we get the planning board sitting with us to discuss LD 2003. Because they see more of a linkage than you do. That's, that's just how they're, they're seeing it. And they're seeing that anything that they put in is more of a placeholder. They're trying to, they're trying to get off the foot. They said they could always dial it back if they felt they had to. But they wanted to get something on board so that these are the people aren't just putting into, putting together ADUs with the concept of being rental cottages essentially. So that was that was their perspective on it.
Yeah, I think we're gonna need to have that discussion because that's, that I don't, my understanding is that's not how the state law reads. So we'll have to have that discussion. Okay. Who had their hand up next? Lisa, I think you're up next.
I don't have anything to report as a liaison to my committees, but we don't have a ZBA liaison. And so I didn't know if Chris could just speak to what is going on regarding the hearing that was last week and that has been pushed back for final whatevers on the 30th. I just think it's important for us to all know what, where we stand.
I think probably I want to be real careful because there is an active appeal of an administrative code officer's decision. The board did not act. They continued that to March 30th. So I would simply say that like all this meeting will be televised. You can see that there's the substance of the appeal is very narrow. There are some issues relative to the development that they're more focused on. So the board is trying to navigate how all that blends together. I really kind of have to stop there, but it's certainly of interest to the neighborhood at large and however the board ends up with it. The town's going to make sure that they understand and whatever steps they need to take to get through it, they will. So that's me being exceptionally short, I guess.
Right. I know we have to walk a fine line, but I think it's just important that the entire select board sort of know where things stand.
Thanks, Lisa. Leslie?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that there is a site plan review board meeting this Thursday, the 16th at seven o'clock. And just the quick, the agenda items, it's a public hearing for nine Barnard Lane, the inn, and then a preliminary meeting for 139, 135 Portland Road.
Great, Miriam.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to what Bill was saying about the planning board meeting last evening, which I watched. The board just wanted to put something in there in order to make sure that they would be able to adhere to the state's intent, which was to provide housing, long-term housing. And so that's why they wanted to put in a prohibition essentially against building an ADU and then turning around and using it as short-term rentals.
Yeah, and maybe you can help clarify one aspect to that. And I think what the board's trying to be really careful about is they're cognizant and the select board's trying to work through something. So they're trying not to open the floodgates and let something happen and then try to have to put the genie back in the bottle. The reason why they're most concerned about this is the state law for accessory dwelling units is now mandating that you have to allow them anywhere that single-family dwellings are allowed. Currently, we do not allow them in a coastal residential zone, which is along the beach, which if you now allow that, it's naturally going to attract that because the seasonal nature of what happens down there. So I think they're just, they're not really trying to regulate this as much as kind of hold it back until you folks can do your piece. So I need to do a better job explaining that, and I apologize for that, because I know there's some confusion there. So they're sort of saying, what's the board doing? And I'm saying, well, the board's not really doing anything yet, but so we will kind of bring that piece back together though.
That's sound like a joint conversation is needed as soon as
And that's one of the reasons I brought it up was to kind of say, you know, ordinance committee, we apparently need to if we're, if we're going to do something, we need to kind of begin to move a little bit more forward on it.
Yep. Well, I definitely will have some, some, something to advance at our next, after our next meeting, or at least we'll have a better idea of what our next step will be. Okay, so the only thing I had to report was the Conservation Commission met last night. Unfortunately, due to illness, I was not able to go. But I will tell you that we are, one of the items that they're interested in talking about is connectivity and among our, essentially our public town lands or, or land trust, public lands, recreational spaces, better connectivity between those spaces, including trails, bike paths and so forth, that kind of connectivity that's non, non, essentially non-vehicle and how those, how those spaces can be better used. So that's one item. They're just a thing they're trying to start me to talk about. I wasn't there for the discussion last night, unfortunately, but I'm going to try to meet with the chair of the commission and potentially with town staff at some point. I'm going to talk to you, Heather, about that because I just saw the note about it. And begin that conversation. But immediately, the other thing that Conservation Commission is working on, and I'm sure they'd want to get the, continue to get the word out about this, is they are having a workshop on the 23rd, on March 23rd, on Thursday, in room 300, 301 of the third floor, Kennybunk Town Hall. And the workshop is on pesticides in your yard and what you should know about working with landscapers, licensed applicators and your neighbors. And they'll have Alex Peacock from the main board of pesticides control and Alan Amioka, a master gardener. And the speakers will discuss how to communicate with professional applicators and landscape companies and how to do, to do your own pesticide-free yard care using these techniques. So that's information is getting out there in the public, and that's been something they've been working on, working toward for a while, and it's a focus of the commission. Yeah, Bill.
Yeah, keep an eye on the state legislation also regarding, regarding pesticides. I understand there may be some bills coming up related to that. I know I sent some stuff out for about an LPC meeting that's coming up. We got a big meeting coming up on the 23rd. They had a shorter meeting today, which I, I wasn't able to get to in time. Just because it was right in the middle of the workday and I couldn't break away from things to get there, but in any case, I, but I did send out the bills and I think, and I did ask for what the votes were on some things, and I'll be forwarding that. I just got that landed, that letter written from Kate Durfor. So that's, that's what's happening there. I do have one last question. Speaking about connectivity, the Economic Development Committee had started some work on connectivity a while back, and I remember being involved for a while there on that, on that subcommittee thing. And that, that, I don't know where that, where that went. We were trying to look at, trying to do something about cell phone coverage downtown. I, I think about that committee every time I drive by Duffy's and my cell phone goes dark, you know? And, and going, damn, when are we going to fix this? So that and also, of course, there was discussion at that point, at one point of where we were going to go with fiber optics in town. And I do, and now it seems like the, the, they're talking about the genie getting away from the bottle. It seems like you've got four or five different companies running around with, or at least three different companies running around with trucks, putting up fiber optics in various areas. So I kind of want to see where, where, you know, where things are going with that, if the Economic Development Committee abandoned it or, or what. Just to toss it out there, I know, I'm sorry that she's not here right now because that, that would have been a great question for her to take back, but.
Okay, so yeah, so the connectivity I was talking about was physical, but not, not communications. But Bill, stay on the line because I'm going to select board individual comments, and I'm going to consider that start of your individual comments, and you just go keep rolling if you have any more to add for tonight.
Oh, yes, yes. Okay, so a big, a big shout out to our fire department. Well, to everybody that works in the town, their town hall, the, all the wonderful people that do all the, all the, all the tasks that we need to get done to maintain this town. But I also want a really big shout out to highway, fire department and police. There was a one ton today that I had to go out twice, but I didn't see at least some representatives of all three out there doing something from the police watching a car that had gone off the road. Luckily, nobody seemed to be hurt. Got the guy kicking the tire. And the, and the, the, then there was, of course, fire department at various locations throughout town. Taking care of people that were having trouble. And of course, and of course, our plow people that were everywhere I, everywhere I looked. So everyone's worked really hard to do, to do, to do the fantastic job of trying to, trying to stay ahead of the storm. And I just want to thank, thank all of you for, for your efforts.
Thanks, Bill. Appreciate that. And if you have an individual comment you'd like to make tonight, just go ahead and raise your hand. If not, that's fine. And we'll go from there. Lisa.
I just wanted to say, Shiloh, I think we jinxed everyone because we're excited for spring and the approval of the roads. But I'm hoping spring is around the corner. And there's a late start tomorrow for those who haven't heard for the schools. But yeah, I just thank you, everyone, for being here. I am looking forward to spring, so we don't have to have any more of these Zoom meetings.
Thank you, Lisa. Miriam.
Oh, yeah, just following up on the EDC connectivity project. I know that they are working on this and I thought, I was just thinking it might be helpful if maybe we invited Steve, their chair, to come and bring us up to date on that. That might be helpful.
That would be great. And someday I would love to be able to make a phone call from my house. That would be wonderful. Okay. Seeing no more hands up, I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Heather for town manager announcements.
Great, thanks so much. So wanted to let folks know that the last day of skating at the Waterhouse is this Thursday, March 19th. So better get your skating in tomorrow or Thursday. And then tax bills will be mailed on March 14th.
better get your skating in tomorrow or Thursday. Um, and then tax bills will be mailed on March fourteenth. Um, the second installment of real estate and personal property taxes are due on April fourteenth. Um, and the first installment was due on October fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Um, so, and then, um, this is kind of, this is Martin's, um, work here, but just reminding folks that if you're interested in serving as an elected official, um, nomination papers are available for the, uh, following positions for June thirteenth annual town meeting, which is select board members. Um, there are two, three-year terms. Um, the school district R S U twenty-one directors, two, three-year terms. Um, Kennybunk, Kennybunk Port, and Wells Water District Trustee, one three-year term. Kennybunk Light and Power District Trustee, one five-year term, uh, and Kennybunk Sewer District Trustee, one three-year term. A minimum of twenty-five signatures is required, and nomination papers can be picked up at the town clerk's office and must be, be returned no later than four thirty P M. on Friday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. So that's all I've got, and, and just wanna, again, also thank all the staff for all their work, um, out there, um, in these not great conditions, and we're all, um, very optimistic for spring to come very soon. Thanks.
Burton, you have something else to add? Thank you, Heather. So you're still muted, Merton?
I just wanted to give a report on the nomination papers. Uh, there are currently three sets out. Bill Ward has taken out papers, uh, for select, uh, select board. Uh, Bob, um, Emmons has taken out for the Water District. And Bev Freudenreich has taken out for, um, K L P.
Thank you. All right, thanks, Burton. Um, and without further ado, um, I think that's everything we have for tonight, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
All right, moved in seconded, let's see. Um, Leslie?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Miriam?
Yes.
Bill?
Hi.
And I am an I, so that would be five zero two. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.